and recreational resources and then to encourage growth within the urban boundaries and support economic development. And the way that it's written, just like that, the support economic development is not confined to the cities and towns.
Okay.
As it is in how we present ourselves. And I was just talking with Scott here. Thank you. And he points out that inaccessibility is also not only necessarily language or historical background, but it's also perceived. And there's been a perception of, as he and others have put it, us against them for a long time. And I don't think that's the easy. I'm confident that's not the ethos of the current Gorge Commission. And so I think it's incumbent upon us in our actions and our words to show that we are, you know, we live, we live in the Gorges. We value this, we value the, the resources of the Gorges, but we also value the ability of people to make a living and raise their families here. And so that perception is, is a challenge. And I think it, it is a long-term challenge. It can't be broken down with, you know, a meet and greet or something like that. It really needs to be what we, what we do and what we say and how we describe the reasons behind what we're doing. We're not always going to make a decision. The Gorge Commission staff works very hard to get to yes. They really, really do. But it's not always possible. And when it's not possible, I think we need to do a very emphatic, empathetic explanation of, empathetic, not emphatic, but empathetic explanation of why we've had to make the decision we have. So that there isn't a sense that it's all sort of building on turning us into a national park, which is the perception of some.
And that's what we've lived. I lived through the inception of the Gorge Commission when I was probably 16. And we're not going to talk about how many years ago that was.
I was older.
And my, and my, my great aunt working on it from Stevenson saying, you need to know about this. This is going to impact our lives and you need to work on this. And it migrated into my life as a young adult and then migrated to where we are. And if you think of how contentious the solar issue is right now, it's nothing compared to what the Gorge Commission days were. And so that has stuck. And those people, many of them are still here or have been impacted and are still impacted. And I can say, when you look at the two fundamentals of where they go, the protection versus the economic growth, they weren't given a 50/50 weight at all.
In fact, one of my brilliant co-commissioners pointed out that in our vital signs indicators, there are 17 that we're tracking. Would you care to hazard a guess how many are scenic, how many are protection of resources and how many are economic development?
16 to one.
Yes, precisely.
Wouldn't surprise me.
You've probably done your homework.
No, I have not, but that's just what happened in my life over watching this.
And I frankly hadn't realized that until she pointed it out. And that's something that I think we need to be front of, front of mind. Those vital signs are really important and I think we can all, apparently they started from a list of 53, I think it was, and whittled down to 17. At least a couple of years ago, it was before I was a commissioner. So I'm not sure exactly on that process or timing, but that alone sends a message. And so how can we make sure we're not overlooking a big part of our, of our National Scenic Act mandate?
And I think another very unfortunate perception was everybody loves national parks, everybody loves natural resources, everybody wants to protect it. But those biggest voices and the biggest protection mechanisms came from outside.
Yes.
And the, the local voices were not heard.
Yes.
They were just pressed.
May I jump into my second tangent because that is the perfect segue for the Forest Services Controlled Burn at Catherine Creek.
And I thought about you.
Yes, the prescribed fire was on, on that day, October 14th, I think it was, 14th or 15th, was intended to be 15 acres. And as we all know, it exceeded 170 acres. What many of your listeners may not be aware of is myself, another commissioner, and about probably two dozen members of the community met with the Forest Service the week before to urge a delay for two reasons. One was because, as I pointed out to the fuels manager, Roland Rose, we have a weather station on our property, which is contiguous to Catherine Creek. And we'd had 11 one hundredths of an inch of rain since May, which meant that Catherine Creek next door was really dry. And I don't know where they were getting their data. They have not shared that. The Forest Service has not shared that. Or where the decision makers were cited, seated, whatever you wish to say. I'm informed, one was in Yakima, which may have different weather conditions than Catherine Creek. But the other thing is a kiter mentioned online, every kiter knew that the wind projections for that afternoon were for gusts of up to 20 to 35 miles an hour. The Forest Services prescribed burn requirements do not go that high. And so we had said, it's dry, it's windy in the gorge. How, yeah, um, we just saw at the microwave tower fire when the, the backburn went awry and added days and I'm not even sure how many acres, many tens of acres, if not more to that fire. And another winemaker in the region tells me that in the two weeks around the Catherine Creek burn, the Forest Service had lit five prescribed fires in Washington State that got out of control and turned into wildfires in a two-week period. So I am, I and a few others have been engaged, a few other commissioners have been engaging with the Forest Service to try to get more community input into their decisions, specifically in the National Scenic Area. And frankly, we're not going to settle to not, for not having it. If we need to bring in our congressman, if we need to ask all the relevant county commissioners to request briefings from the Forest Service, we will do so. Because that's a lot of waste of natural resources up there and scenic resources.
And we're protecting.
And recreational resources. And it's in our mandate to protect those. And so the fact that the community was, was urging delay, the other reason, in addition to being super dry and anticipated winds, the other reason was smoke taint. Because the, for winemakers, for grape growers, if smoke from any fire, whether it's a wildfire or a prescribed fire, lingers on your grapes in the end stages of harvest, you can lose your crop. And so many of the grape growers in Underwood lost their crop a year ago with the Tunnel Five Fire. To have back-to-back crop losses because of an electively chosen date to start a prescribed fire didn't sit well. And it galvanized the community of, of grape growers and winemakers. The Forest Service representatives with whom I spoke said that they had never had smoke taint brought up. And they, I had done some research before our conversation. And on the Forest Service website, there is no link, there's no reference to smoke taint in any of the publicly available materials, period. On the USDA website, and as we know, the Secretary of Agriculture in Washington is responsible for the administering the National Scenic Act. Secretary of Agriculture is also responsible for the Forest Service through the Department of Agriculture. And the USDA website mentions smoke taint, I could find, once. And it's an ongoing four and a half year study of what is smoke taint? It's a scientific study that ends next July, July 2025, about what is smoke taint? Not how does it affect wildfire, you know, how does it affect farmers? How does it affect orchardists, grape growers, whatever? But as we see more wildfire and more prescribed fire that turns into wildfire in the West, I think we've got an opportunity here in the National Scenic Area to lead the conversation about the considerations. The Forest Service was very clear that they could not light a prescribed fire or controlled burn that would affect the cities. So if the wind was going to go in the direction of either White Salmon or Hood River, they, they couldn't light it. And they, they are supposed to keep smoke away from transportation hubs or links like the rail and I-84 and SR-14. But it doesn't say anything about any impact on the economic in the area. They, it talks about infrastructure. And we would argue that our infrastructure are our grapes or our cherry trees or our apple trees or our stone fruit trees. And that is the infrastructure on which our livelihoods are based. And so I, I know that there are several of us on the commission who are going to be seeking a lot of transparency from the Forest Service about how, how, how and who determines prescribed fires. I know it goes up a chain of command, but we haven't, we've asked the question, but not have not yet heard exactly who makes those calls. And how does the community get more involved earlier to have a say in that? Because had that fire, which settled over our vineyard, the smoke was in our, in our yard, if you will, on our farm for days. And had we not finished our harvest two days earlier, we would have been smoked out. We would have lost our annual crop. Now, the earlier prescribed burn settled over Domain Puyol. Their grapes are still on. So, you know, it's, it's not a hypothetical situation. Had the wind switched direction and sent it toward Underwood, I mean, it would have been devastating for folks who were devastated last year. So I, I think there's an opportunity for us as a community to use the National Scenic Act and use our position as Gorge Commissioners to have, to lead more community, say, and not, not, not specific to the Gorge Commission, of course, but the public, more public engagement on decisions made that can affect not only our livelihoods in some cases, but also those, those resources we're supposed to be protecting. And I would close by saying, I am a proponent of prescribed fire. I think prescribed fire is a good thing in the, I think it is a part of fuels reduction and management. But it has to be, as the Forest Service says on its website, right time, right place. And I think the community has a good sense of right time.
Great. I'm writing down a few names and I'll email them, email them to you through economic development and also fire issues that I think could be good resources from our county for you.
That'd be fantastic.
Nailing them in too is going to help keep us involved.
I think we have an opportunity. There's an acting Forest Service supervisor right now named Erin Baker, who lives in White Salmon. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting her yet. I have spoken with her on a number of occasions since she took over about maybe a month ago at this point. But she was on leave during the prescribed fire, so I'm not, we didn't have a chance to interact at that time. I think she is, she has expressed interest in hearing from the community, which would be welcome.
Sometime back, we were on a Zoom about a updated plan. Did that get set aside?
Yes.
Good.
As it should have.
Thank you. We have a lot of other work to do first.
Well, yes. The, the national, if I could just, for the benefit of those listening in, the National Scenic Act has a management plan, which is required to be updated at least every 10 years and, and after at least a five-year, no, no, it can be updated in no less than five years and no greater than 10 years. In other words, in that five to 10-year window. And there was a call by a fellow commissioner to start the update process again sooner, even though the, the date that it's sort of, the clock starts is when the Secretary of Agriculture signs it, which was less than two years ago. And so what I and some other outspoken commissioners were concerned about is not only following the, the regulations as written, but also the effect that it would have on the county commissions. Because every county commission I'm aware of sets out its own work plan. And to have an external element thrown in that isn't in your timeline is not so collegial.
And funding to help us do that.
There you go. We're all, we all, could all use more funding. That is a sure thing. But to, to open it up early for, as I said in the Gorge Commission meeting, why now? What is it that has compelled it? Because for those listening in, we do have the opportunity to open it for amendments at any time. Should something be seen as an existential issue or an urgent issue, that is both urgent and important, that we want to address before reopening the whole management plan, we can use an amendment process. No one has, none of the commissioners nor the staff have come up with something that they would roll out as a needed amendment at this point. But that has, we have the opportunity to do that at any time. And then we'd of course engage the counties as soon as it was proffered as a, as a, as a proposal to, to amend. But I think the, the communication like this is really important with each of the commission, with each of the county commissioners. And one of the things I, I want to make sure we do is be transparent about how our work affects your work and vice versa. And, and to me, it's, it's, it's the way we need to be doing business.
We all need to go the same way, that's for sure.
Yeah. Pulling together is a lot easier than pushing.
Mr. Anderson, I've kind of captured Val. Do you have questions? I don't know if you can hear me.
Thank you. I can unmute until they let me. So Val, do you guys, are you expected to get an update from the Forest Service on the prescribed burn? And have they give, given the, you guys an update at one of your regular meetings yet? Because I think there's a, there's a conversation there that definitely needs to happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. The prescribed fire at the top of the world, as they're calling it, in the Catherine Creek hiking area, took place to, just a couple of days after our last commission meeting. So the Forest Service hasn't had a chance to update us in that setting. It will certainly be a question that we ask of, of the Forest Service representative at the next meeting. That aside, they did have an update on the website about six days into the 11-day wildfire, that it had cost about $300,000 and without including the volunteer time costs. So it will be interesting to see what the, the final tally is. Oh, he's muted again.
Is he? We're not trusting anything.
I wouldn't trust me either.
No, it's because you were hacked earlier.
I, I'm well aware. Thank you for the update. I don't have any further questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with the Hood River White Salmon Bridge project.
Thank you very much, Val.
Are there things that you can ask of us that we can help you with? What can we help you with?
I think I'd like to wait and see the responsiveness of the Forest Service to, to including other voices in the decision-making process. If we find that they might not be as responsive as we would like, I think we will be happy to.
Reaching out.
Yeah, I think, right now, I'll, I'll keep it at the pea shooter and maybe we save the cannon for a little bit later.
Okay. But we do have one.
Yes, yes. No, I appreciate your support. We are not looking to cease prescribed fire. We're looking to do it smartly to preserve our resources.
And I have to say for everyone listening to the Gorge Commission thing, that's one thing too, for reaching out to people, because when you're entrenched in that beginning years of it, everybody knew. You talked to your children about it. Everybody knew what was happening to the gorge. And so that kind of culture has kind of been lost. I think a lot of people don't even know who they are, what they do anymore.
I, I certainly think you're right. And it's, it's interesting because you've got the established families and the Confederate tribes and bands who've been here for a really long time, especially the latter, time immemorial. But then you've got a lot of newer folks, including myself. And we're getting, you know, we're working to get smart on it. But it is, it's, it's a combination of people who formed their perceptions based in the mid-1980s, the early, the first half of the 1980s in the fight to establish the Gorge Commission, which was in fall of 1986. And then it's people who are being affected by it, who might be newer and trying to build something or do a business or something, and they're not sure why these.
Where this layer came from.
Great. I'm ready.
Jake.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So you talked about a little bit about the, of the 16, 15 of them were natural resources. This further probably enhances and entrenches the belief that the Gorge Commission does not really care about economic development and that when they wrote economic development into the plan, it was for a few select large destination resorts, in essence. And that was the economic development that was supposed to occur outside of the urban growth boundary areas. Have you had conversations with the Gorge Commission, your, the staff, as well as your seatmates, about how we more equitably balance those indicators? Because if you're not actually looking at the, the stats, then you can easily say, yeah, we're, we're fulfilling our duties under economic development.
Thank you for that.
Where's that going?
Yes, thank you for that question. If anyone has a spare 45 minutes of time, I would encourage you to listen to the transcript of the last Gorge Commission meeting, starting about 15 minutes in. We had about a 45-minute discussion that raised a lot of points, and I will say emphatically. And one of them was one of my fellow commissioners making the point that 16 of the 17 vital signs indicators are resource-based and not economic development-based, and expressing her interest in having more discussion about economic development and how we can support it and not confined just to the, the urban growth areas. Because to me, we have to be careful of conflating urban boundaries and economic development. They are very clearly distinct in the National Scenic Act's writing. And I think that over time, they've been conflated because some people, including outside organizations that do not live in the gorge, have wanted them to be conflated and pull in the economic development to be thought of as happening in cities and towns, which it most certainly does, but not only, not exclusively. So we're going to be trying to have more discussion at Gorge Commission meetings and less briefings. Briefings are important, but I think it's, there are a number of us who are feeling a little eager to have more voice in the directional guidance, if, if I can put it that bluntly. Instead of, of, of learning what others are doing, we'd like to be raising policy points and, and policy conversations and sort of hashing out. I said in the Gorge Commission meeting that you would hear, any of you would hear in that 45 minutes, that my former boss, Colin Powell, when he was Secretary of State, said that he, he didn't want the assistant secretaries on, who were giving him information for a decision on an issue, if they had different viewpoints, he didn't want them to smooth it out beforehand, say maybe a regional bureau and a functional bureau, like the Economic and Business Bureau and the European Bureau had different views on the way we should do a policy. And he didn't want those assistant secretaries at their level to be polishing the stone that they gave him, taking away all the rough edges. He wanted the rough pebble. He wanted the, everybody to describe exactly what they thought the path should be and his decision should be, and it's, in all its complexities. And then he wanted to make the decision. And I think that my sense is that there is present in the Gorge Commission now, at least the plurality of commissioners, who would like to see a lot of rough stones instead of smooth pebbles.
Nice. Yeah. Took a long time, Jacob.
I think, I think we're there. I know that there have been a lot of people, hundreds, who have served as commissioners and invested their time and, and brain power and smarts and, and interest and, you know, really have done a great amount of good work for the Gorge Commission over time. And as in any commission, whether it's a county commission or a Gorge Commission, the personalities and, and life, lived experiences of the Gorge Commissioners can make a difference. And right now, we've got a fantastic array of different experiences represented in the commissioners. And I think that will prove to be beneficial.
I just want to really thank you because I was an avid fan of yours after we had met, that you would be the perfect choice in our candidates for representing Clicktack County on the Gorge Commission. And every time you come in to visit, it rings true for me that you're staying the course for the people of this county. And you're able to look at very complex issues, but yet come to common ground to protect the people of this county and its resources. And I, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chair Zoller. I have to say, I do feel I work for you, the three commissioners, and for the people of Clicktack. And that's who I think of representing every day that I'm engaged in the work with the Gorge Commission. And I would like to say that they, you know, there are a lot of really, really good people involved in it. And hopefully, over time, we can change that perception of how we feel about the community in which we live.
Thank you. Jake, do you have anything else?
He's still muted. There we go.
Thank you. This is a really great update. I really appreciate the candidness. And that's what I'd like to see from all future updates when I'm no longer on the board and I'm just watching in. I think that's what helps to build that trust with the community is when you bring them upstone.
I'll keep bringing you some rough pebbles. Even though our beautiful wild and scenic rivers smoothed out most pebbles in the area.
Well, thank you. And I'll send you those resources and why I think you should connect with each other.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Always good to see you. So do we have anything else before lunch? That's it? Jake, go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If there's nothing else, I would make a motion to recess the launch hour.
And I will step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. See you after lunch at 1:00. Good afternoon. It's 1:00. And we're going to open the regular meeting of the Clicktack County Commissioners for October 29th, 2024. And we're going to begin with a public hearing with our planning department. We'll be holding public hearings on Resolutions 09024 and Resolution 09124. And we'll be holding two public hearings today. The first will be a resolution to receive public comment in regards to a moratorium and interim zoning controls regarding the bulk storage of lithium-based batteries. The second resolution, 09124, on the resolution, 09124. Okay, that's a double. It's okay. On resolution, 09124, to receive public comment in regard to a moratorium on interim zoning controls regarding battery energy storage systems or BaaS. And so we'll start with a review from staff.
Good afternoon. It's nice to see all three commissioners here for this. And even nicer, I'd say, to see the public. Thank you for coming out. This, this kind of issue is critical to hear from the public on. And so I, I'm really pleased to see this kind of turnout for both hearings. The commissioners, you will note in your packets, I'm sure you saw, as well as a staff report that's being presented, that there is a lot more effort from our department going into the second hearing than the first. That is not a reflection on what's more important. It's a reflection on our, our workload and what fits best into what we're working on. And it happens that the battery energy storage systems is directly in line with the grant-funded project that we're working on with this, along with the solar ordinance. So we, Evan fortunately was able to put a lot more time into that one. So this first report, staff report's going to be brief. As you know, we, you passed a moratorium and interim zoning controls on the bulk storage of lithium-based batteries. That would be any facility in the county, whether a shed, a business, a storage unit that had certain amounts of lithium-based batteries. And the numbers put into that were, I don't want to say randomly generated, but they were meant to be a high number just to get the issue on the table, I believe. they were meant to be a, a high number just to get the issue on the table, I believe. It wasn't necessarily, there was no, um, I'm not an expert on it, uh, we didn't have expert analysis to determine, but that's what the whole process is for. So the purpose of the moratorium and interim zoning controls is to give the county the time we need to research the issue, talk to the actual professionals, and then if necessary, if determined necessary, put something permanent into our zoning ordinance. So the purpose of the hearing today, uh, on the store, bulk storage of that lithium-based batteries, is to hear from the public, get public comment, testimony, and then ultimately, as the board, to make findings. If, if you decide to continue with moratorium, you have the option of just ending the moratorium, or if you decide to continue with moratorium, um, adopting findings to support that moratorium going forward. You have the option also, if we do adopt a work plan, to extend it from six months to twelve months, instead of, to allow time to, um, look into the issues and the code. That's really all I have as far as the staff report, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so we are starting with the oh-nine, oh-two-four for the, uh, lithium batteries. And so, um, we'll open in regards to the moratorium and interim zoning controls regarding bulk storage of lithium-based batteries. Uh, Scott Edelman, our planning director, has given us a staff report. Are there any questions of staff? So hearing none, we'll move forward. I'll now open the public meeting, and we'd like to take comments in person, online, and remember, this is about the lithium-based batteries first, so we'll separate out those two subjects. Uh, so I can start in the room. If you're in the room, please raise your hand, and we'll ask you to come forward to the table so we can record your.
I am, no, no, you're very, I'm sorry, I apologize. And any, any typos, I apologize, because I did that in the last, like, five minutes. Um, I do want to mention that, uh, Lynn, our building official, is here, and appreciate her being here to support us if there's questions that have to do with the, the building code, because I, I meant to mention in the beginning that we do not currently have any, um, planning regulations related to storage batteries, but the building code does have regulations related to those. So that's why she's here, in case there are questions that come up about those issues. So thank you, Lynn.
Okay, and thank you, Scott, for clarifying that, and thank you for spending your time with us today, Lynn. I appreciate it. Um, and online, we'll take, uh, comment from people online too as well, so you'll have to raise your hand or unmute yourself so we can call on you, and we'll start in the room. Is there anyone that would like to give testimony? I would, uh, do it from our sheet that said, who would like to give testimony? I'm going to ask for hands, because, um, the sheet didn't tell me whether or not you want, which resolution you wanted to talk about. So, uh, in regard to lithium batteries, would you like, come, come forward?
I'm Virginia Fitzpatrick, and I want to encourage the.
Hang on a sec, we're gonna get you recorded. You might have to.
Breaking your stuff.
Is that gonna work?
Detective Sebber, Snell.
I can sit.
Sitting.
Whichever one you'd like. There you go.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi. My name is Virginia Fitzpatrick. I live in Goldendale, and I want to encourage the commissioners to vote for the moratorium to extend it to twelve, for twelve months. More and more is coming out, and we're a poorly funded county. We don't have a lot of specialty people here to, um, examine this. No offense, but you know, I don't know what your backgrounds are, and I don't, and the energy people you come up with are usually associated with some of the companies that want to build here. And I also want to just encourage the county to consider, we have eighteen hundred square miles, there's a lot of room. We don't need to put this stuff near cities or homes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll switch to online. Is there anybody that would like to give testimony today? Uh, four-seven-oh-seven is unmuted. Would you like to speak? Maybe not. Maybe it was just an error. Okay. Uh, anyone in the room? Mr. Wagner?
Greg Wagner with CEES. I support the solar or the battery moratoriums. I ask that the commissioners develop the findings of fact, move forward and come up with a, a plan so that we can have the protection we need in the county from these large-scale batteries and the batteries that get stored. I also want to make sure the board realizes that you make your decision based on the testimony that you hear today, not like Mr. Anderson said, he has to decide what other people want. It's based by the law of what testimony is given today. And we do need to have the protection from the batteries. They are definitely dangerous. We need to put them in the right location if we must have them at all. So this needs to move forward, and we need to have the commissioners continue this and come up with the right plan through due diligence of everybody involved and protect all the citizens. So we need to have a work plan and develop good ordinances that are enforceable, not just ordinances like the Model D Commissioning Plan with no enforcement. We need to have enforcement when and if somebody violates the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Online again. Anyone wish to speak online today? Seeing nobody? Mr. Chad? Come forward? Yeah. Well, I'll work my way back there.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I was here probably a year and a half ago. Uh, I brought up the issue of the battery storage facility in New York State that caught fire. These things are about as big as a boxcar, and it burned for five days, and I don't think we have the fire capability to fight it in this county, um, that I'm aware of. Uh, I do wish that you would continue the, uh, moratorium as Mr. Wagner spoke up about. Um, and it's really important, the thing, these things are not cited in agricultural areas due to, uh, possible groundwater pollution. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. If, would you like to clarify?
I realize this is very confusing for the public, the way we're doing this. We have two hearings going on. The first one, I just want to be clear, is only on the bulk storage of lithium batteries. It could be Tesla batteries put in a warehouse, it could be cell phones, it could be, um, uh, twelve-volt batteries. It could be any of those kind of batteries. That's what this one is on. So if you could, if, if you, sir, if you would, at the next hearing, if you could say your same comments, I think yours had to do with the battery energy storage systems that are often associated with solar or wind farms. So your comments were, were appreciated, but if you could also repeat them at the next hearing, that would be great. And I apologize for the confusion that we're doing two at once.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, online, is there anybody with their hand raised? Nope. Nobody? Um, back in the back. Oops. Okay, you're great. Um, okay, good afternoon, Sherry. Can you unmute yourself? If you'd like to give comment on batteries?
Is that, am I in, am I unmuted now?
Okay. Now, yeah.
Okay. Um, I'd like to appreciate Scott for clarifying that these are two separate issues. And so I would, um, like to first off say, I would, uh, I'm in support of the county having a moratorium for storage of batteries. As our society moves more and more towards electric everything, literally everything, um, we have batteries to deal with, and we have been shown that even cellphone batteries can catch on fire, laptop batteries can catch on fire. And again, back to the people having so many electronic things in our lives nowadays, those batteries run out. We have a couple Priuses, and our batteries have died. And these are the battery banks, but these are, I guess, a lithium type of battery, I'm not so sure, but I cannot deposit these batteries into the landfill. So now, unfortunately, until I can find a way, a proper disposal of just this little battery, two of them, I, I have to store them. So, you know, what are, what are we doing, where, how are we gonna handle this in the future? Are, are people just gonna have a lot of batteries that we just can't get rid of and we are forced to store them? You know, and who's gonna regulate this, uh, battery storage thing, you know? Is, is there gonna be a department that, and how would you regulate it? You know, let's say John decided he was gonna offer up, you know, John Doe's gonna offer up to the community, hey, you know, you guys got a lot of batteries, nobody can get rid of them, bring them to my warehouse. You know, and the county would never know. So, you know, who's gonna regulate this? It's a good question. But ultimately, a, a moratorium is necessary to look at the future, because our future are, is batteries in everything, including your, your weed eaters, your lawnmowers, your, you know, everything, every e-bikes, everything. So I'm glad that, uh, the county is discussing the dangers of these batteries. The, the news is out there, you know, those little e-bikes, they catch on fire. New York had to make a law saying that people couldn't store them in, uh, their apartments, because they catch on fire, and then catch their apartments on fire, then kill other people. So we do need regulations, so thank you for having a moratorium, and I hope our county becomes serious for protection for the health and safety and welfare of the people, not protection for the people who want to do other things. So thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Uh, back in the room. Down. Mr. Eldred.
Uh, Damar Eldred, Goldendale. If you're gonna have, um, the utility industrial solar sites that, uh, are, we're staring at here, it wouldn't make no sense to have those not have battery storage. But the battery storage systems become very compromised in a lot of different ways. I mean, just the chemical makeup alone of these batteries are prone to overheating. Then you have the physical damage of a cell or, uh, deterioration due to extreme temperatures, aging, or poor battery maintenance are among the many potential causes of a thermal runaway. And before any permit can even be considered, the developers should be required to have batteries housed in an explosive-proof building, and any additional equipment or personnel that would be required in an emergency, the money should be provided by the developer to handle the cost, and this money should be put up front and not place the burden on the county taxpayers. Also, there should be a detailed procedure for disposing of toxic materials. These batteries do not have a lifespan. These batteries fail in many cases prematurely, and to compare a cellphone battery to these battery storage systems is like comparing the sun to a candle. That's ridiculous. And, uh, you know, the whole thing is, I believe this hearing is the same as the other that, uh, two commissioners have opened up platform for public comment. This is just to massage the public so you can adjust the rhetoric to sell what you've already decided on. And this is one thing that, uh, there are so many things involved with this battery storage system that, uh, I, I think it's gonna be up to the commissioners to really take a good look at what they're doing for the future of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, back online. Any hands raised or unmute yourself, so we know you'd like to speak? Seeing none in the room. Mr. Smith.
Andrew Smith. Scott, I went through this real quickly. I noticed that you got cubic feet in here. Which is. Oh. So I was going through this. So my question to you, Scott, is, are you gonna use all residential, agricultural, and buildings on the same code? Or are you gonna separate them? Because housing, agricultural, and businesses have different sizes of batteries and what they're gonna use their purpose for. Because I run two styles right now for residential and for agricultural. Do you plan to separate it?
Point of order, um, please, if you could address comments to the board, but I'll look to the chair to see if you're ready.
Yes, please.
I don't know. This is a, this is, as you saw, you saw the staff report, this is one that we have not dealt into, probably. Is my, is this on?
I think it was.
I think it's clear, I don't like this question.
Well, we know that.
So that is something that I think this hearing is to establish if there's a need for the moratorium, so we have time to address those issues. It's, it's an odd answer right now, I don't like that, but, um, this issue doesn't fit as well into our purview with the planning department as the other one, so we've not had time to commit to researching it. If the board moves forward, of course we will, we'll seek out the experts, if we're gonna pursue it through the planning ordinance, not just the building code. The document you're referring to.
Yeah. It's built, yeah, I've kind of gone through it really quick, so I got it down a little bit.
But I would assume there would be some different residential, commercial, and industrial.
Right.
I mean, it's, I, I think we have to look very seriously and take a lot of testimony to make sure we're not accidentally limiting people who need to use them, or batteries, or travel batteries.
Yeah. I was going through the storage really quick, so I was like, you don't have it separated out for three different styles of living, from residential-only, um, farm use, agriculture for this area, or big business, and we'll use the hospital as an example, too, of their new system that they threw in there. We definitely need to have something a little more separated, so we can control things a little bit more.
And if you're talking about, so I'll talk about the storage of that.
Yeah.
And that would be something we would do.
Because I, I'll tell you right now, that between just the residential and the agriculture side I have, I've got lots of storage of batteries. And we're talking small, well, I guess the car side batteries, too, uh, lithium batteries. I mean, and everything I have now is battery-operated of some sort. That includes the e-bikes, cars, farm equipment, and other, other things. Are we done?
We need to, to move on.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will point out, there is, within the resolution itself, um, it's only batteries not actively being used, so it's actually actively being used for farm equipment, for equipment, period.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of things to consider under this one. It was way more complicated. I agree. So, back online? Uh-huh, seeing no one. Someone else in the room for the small battery storage dump? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Debbie Wagner with CEES. I support the moratorium because of safety, health, and welfare of the people. I would ask the commissioners to take in consideration findings of facts before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, another chance online? Seeing no one? Uh, great, back in the room for the small lithium battery storage. Anyone else have a comment today? You've been a good, you've been a good participant today.
Candy Magnuson, Goldendale. I think that what we're talking about is different kinds of storage, and today we're talking about, like, your leaf blower story, uh, battery and things like that. And I have a true story about the leaf blower battery. My friend, she went to bed, she plugged hers in ten-thirty at night, the fire alarm went off. She went into her redecorated kitchen, and it was exploding, because her cells in there. And she was smart enough to put a metal pan underneath the battery and a board in front of her face, because it is just spurting flames and stuff, and walked it outside. Guess what? Twenty thousand dollars damage to her house that insurance paid. So they are dangerous. If she hadn't heard that, it could have killed her, it could have burned her house down. So I think that we need to hear more stories like that, to see how dangerous the airplanes, remember, we couldn't have our cellphones on and stuff, the batteries and stuff. So let's, I think we've gotta divide it up into different kinds of batteries. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, back online? Anyone with testimony today? Nope. Back in the room, one more person, anybody else? I didn't see any other hands. So if not. So if not, I'll close the public meeting now for Resolution 09024 regarding a moratorium on interim zoning controls for the bulk storage of lithium-based batteries. Are there any final comments from staff?
Yeah, just a couple. So as the board, your role now is to determine if you want to continue the moratorium. If so, it would be to develop findings to support that. I believe it was suggested by Commissioner Anderson this morning that you wanted to allow time for people who maybe couldn't make it to this evening, this meeting, to be able to submit written comments. So that, that would mean that you would close the public hearing and potentially can continue your deliberations to a future meeting, maybe next week or after that, whenever you'd prefer to develop those findings. And that, that would be my recommendation. I do, I just want to mention, Mr. Wagner has been very helpful in procedures and giving, I, I mentioned appreciation for public comments. He's provided a lot that have helped our department and procedures. I do want to mention, he mentioned that testament, it's, your findings are, have to be based on testimony given in this meeting. If it was a quasi judicial hearing such as a rezone or on a specific property, that'd be the case. You have to base it only on what was actually in the hearing. In this case, as a legislative procedure, you can base it on other things, including your own experience, conversations outside. There wasn't, for example, we didn't do people in favor of people against, it was just public comment. So when you do develop your findings, certainly take from what's been said here today. You can also bring in additional items that you feel are necessary when that, it comes to it. Because, because it's legislative specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Christopher.
Thank you. I got questions of staff. Is that okay? If that's okay?
Yes.
Bear with me, my throat's kind of on fire, so I'm going to try to talk, but I don't know that I will. Uh, my question's for Building Department since I saw her sitting in the audience back there. First question is, do we have, or does anybody in the room know if we have in the county some way, do we issue business licenses? If I wanted to open Battery Recycling LLC and store, you know, I don't know, 15 dump trucks full of lithium batteries in my barn, would there be an avenue in the county to get a business license for that?
Not through the Building Department.
Okay, would they need, would I need if I was going to open such a business? And you know, like take Sherri's old Tesla battery and the old weed whacker batteries and store them all in my barn? Would, would I need to go to you to get any kind of permit other than what's originally given for my barn right now? Would I need to gather anything new?
If it was going to be more than private use, technically you would need to come to the county and get an expanded building permit based upon what you were changing the use of because that's not really a barn in the formal sense anymore. But I have no means to go around and make sure people aren't putting a whole lot of batteries in their barns. But if they were to come to the department to ask about it, I would indicate that yes, they do need permitting. And then I would provide them with the parameters of the fire code and the building code to indicate maximum square footages and.
Okay, so let me, let me remove the word barn and stay, I have a storage shed or a storage building, which is meant to store, you know, stuff. Would it then be out of regulation to be able to store a bunch of batteries?
It depends on the size and the scope and the type. The building code indicates, you know, maximum area of each storage portion, like you can't exceed, you know, 900 square feet. And then you have to separate it by this many feet. And that's the parameters that I have to work under. But again, it's, it's structure driven, it's structure based and the use of that structure.
Right. So my point is, I guess where I'm trying to get to is if somebody built themselves a 20 by 40 metal building on their property and got the permit for doing so, we won't call it a barn anymore. We'll call it a metal, metal building or a storage building. I, I do not believe they would need to come to you to get a permit to store batteries in there if they decided to open a business. Are you saying they would need to come to you to get permits if they decided to store batteries in their already built building?
If the use of a building changes, technically they should come to us and say, do I need a new permit? That's part of the answer. But the other part is storage is storage. And if I, if I give someone a permit for a building, that's a storage building and they're storing in it, I don't have any means to go out and say, well, you're storing something different than what I thought you were storing. We tried to be clear at the beginning to ask them what they will be storing there so that we can look at fire separation, if they need to be raided walls, that sort of.
Right, okay. That, that answers my question because same idea, it could be a 20-year-old building that was permitted 20 years ago. And somebody just decided to use said building to store and recycle a bunch of batteries. And while I know we're not talking about the best system right now, it has its own fire risks. But it isn't hard to look through history and find out where companies have opened these little lithium ion storage recycling, we'll call them, businesses, and then just stockpiled until the place burnt down. And that is more of what I'm worried about than somebody having, you know, 12 tractor batteries on their farm or weed whacker batteries. I'm more worried about somebody opening a recycling business using an existing structure. So they don't need any permit, they don't need any business license. Next thing you know, we have a warehouse full of recycled lithium batteries that could potentially pose a fire risk and a health hazard if the wind's blowing towards Goldendale when it catches on fire. So thank you, you answered my question.
You're welcome. And that's why I'm here today to support Scott in the planning department. Because there's only so much that I can do through the building code to minimize risks.
Right.
And so I wanted to be available and, you know, if they had questions on the building side, but to support Scott on his side. And, you know, he's got a lot more research to do. You know, while we all, as multiple departments, decide how to proceed.
Well, and that, that's kind of my thinking. When I understand this started with the best, but my, my biggest concern is always somebody, you know, starting their own recycling business. And then either go bankrupt and making the county clean it up and/or the place catching fire. So in, in my best avenue, I would like to see this go to the Planning Commission. I would like to sit them, have them sit down with, with you staff and, and any local experts and, and figure out, are we opening a can of worms by not doing anything? I, I, I would hate to just close this hearing today and, and the moratorium without ever getting more people to think about it, talk about it and research it. Maybe we're going nowhere, but I have a feeling we're going somewhere. So that, that will be my recommendation moving forward.
Anything from you, Mr. Anderson? If not, I'll move forward. Hearing nothing. We have a recommendation to.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I have to be unmuted in order to speak and it takes a while. Okay, so this is, uh, this is for Ms. Ward. Can you go through that a little bit? Because I believe on a previous conversation we had, if you would like to provide the, or if you would like to store batteries, a, a large amount of them, would that, that would be considered a change of use, correct? And that would be changing the use from, say, commercial or industrial for the building to, don't you have different use codes and one of them being hazardous, which likely this would fall under?
Yes, I mean, that's where, if they came to my department, I would need to know the types of batteries, the quantities of batteries, the square footage. Because if it's under a certain threshold, then it's storage. But if it exceeds that threshold, then it becomes hazardous use. And then we get into greater setbacks, more fire safety as exterior walls, fire rating, sprinkler systems, you know, to put out a fire, those sorts of things. But if I don't know or they don't come talk to me, then I can't, you know.
And that is already in the fire code that we have adopted, correct?
We adopted the 2021 fire code, building code. I did do a packet that I'm sure they'll scan and put in your email. Everything that's in blue and what I typed up is new to the 2021 code. So this is definitely an always evolving topic in the building code. But, you know, we do our best to keep up, but the code is never, you know, as fast as the industry is. But yes, F1 is moderate hazard storage, which includes ESS in dedicated use buildings. And then if it's outside of the quantities, then it goes into an H occupancy, which is a hazard. But I mean, that's until I get plans and know that that's what someone's planning to do. You know, that's the best I can do on the building code side.
So what I'm hearing is, is it sounds like we already have the codes in place. What their issue is, is there's no mechanism if someone were to start doing this without somebody else turning them into the county for code violation. There's no way in which that anybody would know what they're doing, use the platform. So it seems like we're, we're talking about two, two separate issues here.
Right.
Number one is.
That we adopted, but that has nothing to do with zoning or planning, it's only the structure.
Precisely. That's, that's kind of, I guess where I, what I'm getting at is, is we have the codes to deal with something which is the use of the building. I guess that would then go to Scott. What would, if somebody currently came in and said they want to start a battery stored recycling facility, how would, how would your department treat that currently?
It would depend on the zone and what uses were allowed. Without looking at the code, I would assume that wouldn't be allowed in most zones, any residential, agriculture, those type of zones. It'd have to be a commercial or industrial zone. I would imagine that that would probably be a conditional use. I doubt that we have that specific battery recycling use or storage use. So we would have to find the most similar use and more than likely than not, due to the hazardous nature, I would likely make the interpretation that it would need to be a conditional use rather than outright use. That's without looking at the code, that would be my best educated guess as how we would handle that, likely through a conditional use process.
Okay, so, so what we have is, it sounds to me, we already have the building side under control. And it sounds like we have the planning side under control as well. If somebody came in and wanted to do this, you would say this is incompatible with the rural zone or whichever zone it is, unless they are wanting to put it in industrial zone, which we only have very few industrial zones throughout, spread throughout the county. And then that would get kicked over to Lynn and Lynn would have to set the standards and set max based on the fire code. So I guess my question then is, what is the issue that we're trying to fix here that we don't currently have processes in place through the conditional use permit or any other process that would, that, that is, makes it necessary to have a moratorium?
If I can make a recommendation? Okay. Dan?
Jake's, I wouldn't run away, Lynn, you might still be needed. I could barely see her in the corner of the camera and I did see she scurried away from there. I guess my, my question going off of Commissioner Anderson is, do we currently have building and planning code for the storage if somebody was going to take their property and store a bunch of bulk tires on it? Would, if, if I wanted to, and I guess I'll ask the question of Scott, it wouldn't be a building if I didn't put them in a building. If I was just going to put them on the corner of my property out here and take 40 acres, but I'm going to take about an acre and a half of it and just start collecting recycled tires, would I need to come in and get a conditional use permit to, to put a bunch of tires on the corner of my property?
I don't believe we would probably grant a condition use permit. Of course, it would be the Board of Adjustments who do it, but we would certainly tell them that it's unlikely to be approved by the Board of Adjustment. As far as being able to do it, and if they just did it, we'd address it through the nuisance ordinance, through code enforcement.
Okay, so that's not something that somebody can just do without permission?
Correct. It would be, I mean, if, if no one can see it and no one reports it, they could, they would do it and no one would know. But if it was reported to the county, it would be put through code enforcement through the nuisance ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Right.
Great. My recommendation would be keeping the written record open and continuing commissioner deliberation until Wednesday, November 5th. And that way we can capture more comments, we can think about the things we've talked about today. And then we can finish our deliberations on November 5th for a decision for this moratorium.
And just for clarity, is that to keep the written record open until the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, my concern with that is I will be out of the area. I will be back in, well, no, I won't even be back in the state at that point. So I would recommend the following week.
Mr. Anderson? What's the date, the following week? The 12th? Do you have any concerns keeping it up until the 12th so that we're all here, Mr. Anderson? Okay, he's good. We didn't want to unmute him.
Unmuted, yes. Well, I've been muting myself too because I'm coughing. So, and then they got to unmute me, so.
Yeah, sorry. I needed to be unmuted. That's what, that's why I was raising my hands, not, I'm agreeing with it. Uh, it, it sounded to me like staff has said that they did not have time to do a full in-depth analysis of this. If we set this hearing for two weeks, I would like a further staff update from that. I'm yet to hear any findings or any facts that would lead me to findings in which I can say that this is necessary, that we don't have processes in place to, to manage this and handle this. So what I need from staff is exactly that. What is the actual issue we're trying to fix here that the systems are not currently in place to handle?
Elise? Is that scheduled for an hour or?
Yeah, it's scheduled two times. So it's scheduled at 1 o'clock and maybe at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
If you, if they keep it to an hour, we should do that now.
Okay. Um, we already have our six-year road plan scheduled for 1 o'clock and 6 o'clock. Would you like to fit it in between?
I, I would do it after the six-year road plan by my experience on the board. I believe we have usually one commenter on the six-year road plan. And that's it. And that commenter is usually from Wish Room every year. So I wouldn't expect the, the public hearing to go along on the six-year road plan. And, you know, technically we're done at 1:30 every day anyway. So even if that makes, we're done at 2:30, it's still way early.
That's a long day. We have to be here anyhow, so I'm.
I would, I would also, if we have two weeks, request that staff give us a flow chart of how it would currently work if somebody wanted to put, uh, storage of batteries legally do it through the process and what that, what that flow chart looks like currently. And what, if, if anything, we need to do to fix that.
I would agree with Mr. Anderson, that would be helpful, but I'd also like to reach out to code compliance to find out what our legal uh, recourse is are if we do nothing and then find something that, you know, found somebody did it without permits, what can we do? So I would like to hear from them on that one as well.
And Elise, if we could give Road Department their regular schedule from 1 to 2? If we could do this 2:30 to 3:30, have a half hour break?
I don't know that you have to have the end time. You can schedule both public hearings for 1 o'clock. And when one's done, you roll right back into the next one.
That works for your scheduling.
That is how we normally do public hearings. We just schedule them all at 1 o'clock and take them one after another.
Okay.
Mr. Zoller, if I may ask a question? So as I said, the reason we did not put a lot of work. So as I said, the reason we, um, did not put a lot of work into researching this has more to do with department objectives, our priority goals, um, various projects we're working on, limit of time. So this will be, uh, committing potentially significant amount of time in the next week or so to researching this, which I'd intended to wait until we actually took it through the planning commission. So I'd like to ask, um, Commissioner Anderson for clarification on what, um, could you, could you give me some questions you want us to research specifically? Um, is it history of fires of batteries? Is it? How many batteries are danger? It's, this is just nothing we've actually, like I said, made purposely not taking the time to look into because it doesn't fit with our current work program. Um, so it'd be good to have some direction. So I'm not just shooting in the dark since we're going to spend some time on this.
I think he, he can correct me if I'm wrong. I think he just asked for building and planning to give us a procedure of what it would take currently if somebody wanted to turn their building into storage.
Thank you. And that's very easy. That'll be very easy to put together. I, I thought, Commissioner Anderson, you'd ask for more research on from professionals who actually know details about the dangers of batteries, storage of batteries.
No, I think that was me. I was hoping that it would get to the planning commission and they would be able to do that, but I don't think that's what he asked, but he's back now. So maybe.
What, what I'm asking for is what the facts are that says that there's an issue that we need to enact a moratorium for. We don't currently have the processes in place to handle it in the first place. I'm still yet to, to see the facts.
Got clarified enough.
We, we will do a research and get as much as we can.
I appreciate it. Okay. So we're good. The twelfth, we'll move on with that one on the twelfth. And just be aware that written testimony is still open until that time. So we can take more public comment. Uh, so we'll now open the meeting on resolution zero nine, one, two, four in regards to a moratorium and interim zoning controls regarding battery energy storage systems or B A S. And I'd like to invite Scott and Evan to give us a overview.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm going to talk mostly just so Evan has time to open up his PowerPoint presentation and get ready to share his screen. Um, as you're aware, this moratorium, this was, uh, is more in line with what work we're already doing. We have a grant from the state to update, um, solar ordinance. As part of that, after, we originally wrote the grant to specifically only be an ordinance deal with solar issues because our current energy overlay zone, in my opinion, I think a lot of others, is not sufficient to regulate solar and protect the values of the county. And I think we see that in, it also doesn't allow us to push it to where it is appropriate, most appropriate for the county. Um, the ordinance initially was just going to be solar, but in the meantime, uh, a lot of concerns been raised by the public about battery, energy, storage systems or B A S. And so we amended the contract after awarded the grant to include a study on the kind of a SWOT analysis, uh, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats report that will be considered as part of this. I see ultimately this resulting in a solar ordinance and a B A S ordinance. Do you, it'll be separate because the, uh, battery energy storage systems could be part of a solar project, they could be part of a wind project, or they can be a standalone project. So, um, whether that's prohibiting them, whether it's, or whether it's allowing them with s- uh, specific restrictions on both where they'll be located in the county and then site development restrictions, that's what we'll be working on and, um, staff report received, it has my name on it, but it was all Evan's work and, uh, he did, did a good job. So he's got a presentation to, uh, to, to start off this hearing.
Thank you.
Let me share.
I requested it.
See, can you go to your share then? And then click on your presentation, yeah.
I have to plug in?
Um.
Let's see. No, it's here. Okay, good.
Good.
There we go.
Excellent.
And more.
And I'm chair, board commissioners. Uh, my name is Evan Evangelopoulos here, a long range planner with, uh, Quikit County. And I will be presenting now uh, the PowerPoint with information reflecting the staff report submitted on uh, on battery energy systems. And also known as B A S. So this is, we're talking about grid level, utility level. Battery energy systems. And, uh, this is in general what they look like. They are container sized systems placed one next to the other. And as you can see here, uh, they look like containers. But they contain batteries and they have several other systems incorporated in them. Like the air conditioning and vents that you see in this image. In general, as a principle, energy storage is important. There's reasons for that and not just battery energy storage and e- e- every e- energy storage. Uh, the ability to store energy because, uh, energy production can, um, there's unused energy. If, if it's not consumed, it, it gets lost. So it's good to have, to be able to store energy. Uh, sometimes production is low, uh, like for example, with a hydro uh, thermal plants here in, in Washington State, sometimes production is low. So it's good to have some store energy to introduce into the system. Also, it saves energy and money from overusing power plants, whether that, those are coal or any other type of plants during peak demand. So these are three basic reasons why energy storage is, uh, is important. Now, um, energy storage systems of all types have increased across, across the country. You see here a graph from twenty twenty to twenty eight and projections also in the future. And the darker, uh, part of the graph is the grid scale that we're talking about here. It's expected to increase. And this is another, uh, image right now of a, of a grid level store, battery storage system, lots of vents on the roof and we'll get more into that pretty soon. Uh, the vents have to do with, with the temperature and the thermal runaway that someone mentioned. Uh, this is the current situation in the U S. Uh, battery energy systems, uh, installed in the U S grid level overall. And you see there's definitely fewer up in the Washington Oregon area. Most of them are concentrated in California and Texas and, uh, the, the New York area. And this is the Washington and Oregon state of storage systems at this point. This is what a container looks like, uh, battery, batteries stored inside and there's, uh, there's an inverter. There is a power di- distribution, the inventor converts the, uh, the energy from, uh, um, uh, from alternative uh, to, to alternative energy in a way. And there's air conditioning, there's sensors, I'll get more into sensors and there's, um, and pressure relief devices. So it's not just a simple container. And this, uh, this is what the battery stacks look, look like. And this is another look at the battery stacks and this is ba- basically a batteries. It really, it's really not different than a, than a vehicle battery. The same concept, same idea, an anode, a cathode, and just the chemicals are different. So coming to lithium batteries that are mostly used in the battery, in the battery energy systems. Uh, the mo- the two most used ones are the ones at, uh, number one and two, lithium, nickel, manganese, cobalt. Also known as, uh, N M C and lithium iron phosphate, which I'll get a little bit more into them. Number two, there's also those, uh, other types. Uh, moving on, uh, for the future, uh, sodium sulfur batteries are the ones based on the, the research we've done that really upcoming right now. There's also some that say within five to seven years, everything will be replaced by sodium sulfur batteries. Uh, the technology is really evolving. They're definitely safer. Of course, sodium and sulfur are much safer ingredients to include in there. There's flow batteries, also safer, but low energy density. And there's plastic batteries also. Lots of research are done right now with polymers in, uh, uh, M I T. But those are, still have a lot of time to evolve. And some, I'm comparing the lithium iron to lithium cobalt, which are the two mostly used batteries. Right now vehicles, uh, special Tesla as far as uh, we've read are, uh, slowly converting into lithium iron. And the problem with, uh, the main issue with lithium iron is that they're not as energy dense. Means that they, uh, within the same size, they contain less energy. Therefore you will need a larger size battery, uh, to, uh, to use that system. Although there's a, they're much safer, they, they're not as prone to fires as the other ones are. And that's a very important thing to consider when we consider our, our possibilities within the county. And also another, uh, they get, they can get recycled much more easily because the components are, um, easily uh, available and more recyclable. Inherent stability and lower risk of thermal runaway because of lower energy density. These are the, the, uh, benefits of L F P batteries, lithium iron. Uh, more easily recyclable components and less expensive materials. There's no cobalt or nickel. Uh, and this brings us to thermal runaway. It's a faulty process where a battery generates more heat that it can dissipate. And there's reasons for that. Uh, any faults within a battery and those faults can be generated during construction, during transportation, installation, or any other accidental event. Let's, just a, a lightning, for example. Um, so the thermal runaway can create a short and that can start uh, a process that starts with gases emitted from the battery. And those eventually can lead into a fire. So thermal runaway results, fires, potential explosions leads to evacuations, road clog closures, toxic fumes, long and specialized suppression of fires by firefighters. So there are some thermal runaway accidents in the U S. Most of them are very recent. The very first one is in Surprise, Arizona, in, on April nineteenth, twenty nineteen. And where four firefighters were injured, uh, there was an explosion also. There were no off gassing sensors within the facility, which means that the fire started and that's when the alarm went off. Uh, there were gas and the gases might be, might be emitted for days actually before the actual fire starts. That's why it's very important to have, uh, off gassing sensors, very sensitive ones, high quality sen- sensors. Maintained well within the fire, within the facility so they can inform someone or they can inform themselves basically. Right now we have systems that can talk to each other. The I O T, if you've heard the, the term, and they can shut off the system au- automatically. But of course, someone needs to be maintaining, ma- maintaining the system really well. So you see the, the amount, the, the number of vehicles gathered there. This is a very special fire because no one at the time, no one knew how to put out the fires. So it created a lot of studies by, by, by fire departments. And this is the other major fire, this, this last May in Otte Mesa in, in California. It burned for eleven days, like the evacuations of road and road closures. Within three hours of the fire's ignition, there were lethal amounts of hydrogen cyanide in the air, according to the California Fire Department. This is another fire also in the San Diego area in Escondido, evacuations of road closures. This is a fire in Germany. Uh, that, uh, lasted about ten hours, highway closure. This was a lithium iron battery. It was not lithium iron. So those are much safer, but there's still, there's still a possibility for fire there. That's why, uh, although much lower. And this is a transportation accident on I fifteen in California, in the San Bernardino County. Uh, that created, uh, that's I fifteen, uh, if you're not familiar, it's the interstate that connects Los Angeles to Las Vegas. And it resulted, it resulted in enclosure of the highway for about forty-three hours. And you see the truck and the battery burning on the site. So, uh, it's not, um, it makes sense that we have opposition to battery storage systems. This is the opposition. And temporary moratoria throughout the country between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-three, huge increase. And here is an increase in, uh, the situation in state of Washington and objections um, to project. So ways to address the issue. High quality and multiple types of sensors and I O T related equipment, sensors communicated with shutdown equipment. So as soon they smell a, a gas leak, they can immediately shut down the, the, the equipment. So there's off gassing sensors, there's cabinet pressure sensors, temperature sensors, battery leakage sensors, suspended particle sensors, door status sensors, humidity sensors, air duct sensors. And I'm sure by, by the time this, uh, I've written this, other types of sensors are involved in this also. But someone needs to maintain this system because if you notice yourself, if you go into a room where it smells bad, if you stay in the room for fifteen minutes or half an hour, you won't smell anything anymore. So it's the same thing with sensors. After a few months, they might not be as sensitive as they used to be. So someone needs to maintain them. Therefore, uh, a sensor and system maintenance should be part of the deal. Uh, uh, part of the application, uh, with, with the county, a decommissioning plan. Uh, and then an insurance plan. There's, there are many insurance companies out there that really provide insurance for best facilities. And of course, best standards in the new or separate, uh, solar ordinance. So this is a, a, a summary in one very interesting article in, on LinkedIn. Uh, talking about thermal barriers, A I powered suppression. It's, it's all, basically it's all about sensors. And then at the end is improved zoning laws, which we will get into eventually in the county. And this is a very well-known graphic. You, you probably find that everywhere, uh, about, so yes, battery accidents are about the same per year. According to this graphic, although battery installations have increased dramatically, which reminded me of another graphic of, um, airplane accidents from the fifties and sixties compared to airplane accidents. Now in a way, uh, it's, the graphic is very similar anyway. And that shows basically that technology is evolving constantly. What we're talking about now, lithium iron, we won't be talking about five, ten years from now. Things will change and will become, my guess, if, uh, sodium, uh, sulfur become more prevalent, then everything will become safer. And so here is the recommendation. Support the moratorium in accordance with R C W thirty-six seventy-seven nine-five, referencing the staff report as the basis for fighting with amendments and additions as necessary. And extend the moratorium an additional six months from March tw- to, uh, second to September second, twenty twenty-five. And this completes my presentation. And this completes my presentation.
Thank you very much. So any questions of staff? From the commissioners? Mr. Christopher?
Yes, thanks having good presentation. Clarification question. If the board, say, extends the moratorium and refers this to the planning commission for research and recommendation, is the planning commission, is, is the idea of your presentation that the planning commission will look into all types of battery storage, including what's potentially coming down the road in a year or five years? Or are they only looking at lithium right now?
Well, looking at lithium right now, because these are the ones used. Sodium are not used yet, they're still experimental, although they are beginning, but not yet. In a month, I may give you another answer.
Right, I guess that's, that's kind of my wonder is if we, if we do something now for lithium, and then a new battery comes out a year from now, that we kind of know is coming out, but then do we have to have the planning commission go back and look into that battery as well? Or can they just look at everything that's available right now and, and I would feel more comfortable if they were looking at everything versus just lithium per se, because you know, yes, some of the new ones are going to be very safe.
I'll interject, so the lithium discussion has primarily been on the other hearing with the storage of lithium-based batteries. To this point, we've referred to just best, we haven't said what kind. So I think we would likely try to keep it broad so that would address changing technologies, that would be my goal for the commission.
Okay, I like that, and I like the idea of, if, if they were to do something like that, reevaluating every so many years just to keep up with, make sure our code doesn't get 20 years old and we're losing things, but thank you for the clarification.
And thank you for that point, that's something that Evan and I were just talking about yesterday, the need to put within either the comprehensive plan policies or the code itself, a regular set times to review technology for updates, I think we need to make sure that's actually put in place.
I, I would like that in wording, in, in the document, so we don't go another 20 years.
We agree.
Yep, okay, thank you, no more clarification questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, do you have any questions of staff?
I'd like to, I'd like to hear what everyone has to say before I have more questions to staff.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will now open to, open the public hearing. Shall we start in the room? I'll start in the room, if somebody would like to speak, would you please raise your hand? I'm not going to be able to go from the list, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I ask Evan to unshare his screen so we on Zoom can see?
Keep working on it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Pesky technology.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Bruce Fitzpatrick, and I didn't prepare anything, so I'll try not to drag on too much. But I would like to hear somebody from the fire department come in and say what they have ready, in case this does happen. And I do support the moratorium, and I appreciate that things are getting safer. But the people that originally started probably thought it was safe too, nobody invests that kind of money to fail. So we just, it's kind of a work in progress. And I wish I'd wrote something down, thank you very much, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone online, if you'd raise your hand or unmute yourself so we could call on you? In regard to best battery storage, large industrial.
Just to be clear, I don't think anybody online can unmute themselves unless they raise their hand, so they need to click the react button at the bottom of your screen and then go to raise hand.
There we go. Good afternoon, Sherry. Oh, you disappeared.
Okay.
There you are.
Can I have my, that time started over? That's not three minutes. I'll start when the time starts over.
There you go.
Is there a timer?
Yes.
I can't see it.
You're at three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do appreciate the presentation, and I was taking notes. We had a lot of future maybe could happen, all that stuff, so I'd like to, okay, first off, I do support the moratorium. At least people are taking a pause. Okay, so that's my stance on that. But I don't think we should be dealing with future batteries that could come. We need to deal with what is on the market now, so you know, that just is common sense. Cause can't depend on maybes, and the people bring you the dangers of all this stuff. But it just seems that public officials push forward on this. And again, I want to say that we all know now, these are foreign private corporations with little baby corporations on the front of them, you know, in the US, but you trace them back, they're foreign. Why do they want to put these things, all these things, these batteries that are dangerous on our land, when we already know we don't profit from it? And so I say they need to take it back to their country, and I don't, and then, let me see, what else did I do? Basically, you know, I feel like I put the They Live sunglasses on when the Department of Commerce came into Click Attack County and went, hey, guys, I got some renewable energy money for you, and then our county's like, oh yeah? Yeah, 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 we'll take your money, and then we'll write good ordinances. Well, we pretty much, the people know, these good ordinances are going to be good for what the state wants you guys to do. The people tell you, we don't want acres of black glass. I've even said, I'm concerned for those landowners who are being frauded. We don't want two acres of batteries stored in a fill that can kill people just by its toxic thermal runaway. That's not what the people want, so any decisions, any ordinances written to allow this to happen is obviously a bought-out bribe from state money coming in here, convincing you, you guys to write whatever to allow these foreign corporations to destroy this beautiful land. And then we're going to have a super fun cleanup for the next generation, we need to have common sense. And for batteries, these, come on, I have a little battery system that we're scared of in our shop. That has sensors on it, sensors fail. We shouldn't have them at all, but thanks for thinking about it, let's hope you do the right thing for the people.
Thank you, Sherry. Back in the room. Hi, Russ, come, I'm gonna let Russ come forward. Good to see you.
Be here. First off, thank you commissioners for having this meeting. I'm glad to see that you're getting out in front of this issue instead of can being kicked down the road like it was with the solar. I'm not against battery injuries, battery energy storage systems are best. I do think it's imperative though that this county gets some zoning ordinances in place before these things start being applied for here. We need to consider stuff, number one, my concern is population density where these things would be cited. I mean, that's something we really got to look at, prevailing winds. You know, if we have one west of town here, and the winds we get, that, that could be a real disaster for this city. The other thing is view shed, I mean, no one wants to look at these storage containers sitting right next to their property. You know, we've got to look at stuff like setbacks and things like that. So I'm all for the moratorium, I'm looking forward to the planning commission coming up with something that will be useful for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Online. I'll give you a second just in case. I'm not seeing anyone. So back in the room. Mr. Wagner? Thank you.
Again, I support the moratorium on the battery energy storage systems. I'd like to see the findings of facts, I'd like the commissioners to come up with a work plan, hand it off to the planning commission, spend as much time as necessary to do it right. But in the end, we can have all the ordinances, and if we allow battery storage, energy systems in the county, once they're in, the regulations may be ignored, and we're just stuck with it. And that's a problem we have to look at. Once they're here, how do we get rid of them? If we're going to have plans and, and ordinance on it, there has to be something enforceable. It just can't be, we give them a condition or use permit and then forget about them. When they violate the conditions of the permit, there needs to be penalties for that. But unfortunately, you're going to be dealing with a big corporation in small town, small county USA, and we won't be able to fight their attorneys, and their system will stay in place in danger in all our lives. So I just can't see even reason why we need regulations, why not just say we don't want them at all? We got all kinds of problems, I won't go into details on it, I hope the planning commission allows us to, if they get to do this, for the citizens to have input on this. Cause it's our future that they're deciding on and that you will decide on once they make recommendations to you, who is ever up there after the first of the year. And we need commissioners that look out for us first and not these corporations. Cause they're here to take, they're not here to give us anything. Maybe they're here to give us a mess in the long run, but you know, there's nothing in place in the model decommissioning plan to deal with batteries. We have nothing in that, so what are we going to do about the decommissioning or the mess that comes from them when they catch on fire? You know, that they're going to have to do a EPA study of the land once the fire is extinguished and like the big hole in the parking lot over here when the EPA had to get involved, and it took $80,000 and months later before they could do the, finish up the project on the parking lot? You know, this is just a big disaster in the makings. If we leave it move forward, we're going to be stuck with it, these corporations will walk away. They can file bankruptcy and we're stuck with all the mess. So we need to, probably need to really put some, if we're going to have the restrictions, then it's have to be really tough on them. And then they're going to have to be enforceable, we got to have people that stand up and enforce it and protect the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Back online. Is there anybody wanting to make comment today? Yeah, no one, who else in the room, Mr. Tab, come forward. Thank you.
Yes, again, I want to support the ongoing moratorium. And I would say hearty amen, amen to what Mr. Wagner had said. Again, I want to reiterate the fact that these, there are other incidents that have occurred since the one in New York State. But my understanding is, is it burnt for five days and they couldn't put it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back in the room, someone in the back? Mr. Smith? You're wound up today, you're not waiting for last.
Well, you're cutting it down all the time. Andrew Smith, Click Attack County. So let's go back 60 years ago, plus, World War II, Navy submarines, US battery storage was put all underneath, underground, had all kinds of fire issues. No venting system problems, had problems getting rid of all the batteries and all the waste from it. Love your best system, I know batteries are going to come, all the storage systems will be coming. So it came down to space. Can we halfway bury these things down in the ground so we're not seeing everything? So if it does catch on fire? If we have any issues like that, ground is a coolant. It's a thought. I like how you have top air vents on it, controlled systems inside. But this county cannot handle a major fire. None of our fire districts can handle this. It's almost easier to bury the fire if it's already halfway into the ground than it is to try to put water on it. We don't even have a foam system. Nobody here's got foam to even begin to put this out, it's a thought.
Based, I'll answer you, based on the research we've done, no one references burying the batteries. There was no reference to burying at all, no ideas about burying at all, so.
This is just burying the half, just halfway down, so it's sorted out in the ground, yeah.
That's probably a question to ask for someone, to someone who develops the batteries. It's an idea, it's definitely an idea.
It is.
But someone who develops the batteries, a technical person might be able to ask her whether that's doable or not.
Well, that's a good question.
Yep, and a good one for the advisory committee when they meet, because they'll, they'll be professionals who might be able to answer that question.
Cause that's something to really think about, everything's always built on top, we've got enough areas that we can put it down a little bit and spread it out more, we don't have to have them so confined.
That's one recommendation basically to avoid the fires, to keep them further apart. And actually, there's many of the zoning codes that we're, that we're studying right now for solar ordinances and BSS require certain distance between those containers.
All right, that's a thought, so you're thinking a little bit of the future that, no matter what batteries we use in the future.
Which ones?
No matter what batteries or how we go with batteries in the future.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Online. Anyone want to give comment today?
Again, if you're online, you need to go to the bottom of your screen, click the little heart, react, and then raise your hand.
No one? Back in the room. Come forward, please.
I'm Warren Daisy, and I live on Pine Forest Road, so the Night Road Project, that battery storage thing, is going to be basically at my back door. Got 44 acres, and it's a major wildlife quarter. I've got animals on the ground, and if you have all this whatever it was called, coming up through the top, well, I've identified over 30 different kinds of birds on my property. How's that going to affect the wildlife? We, we also, you heard from Russ. Yeah, we've got some 20-acre pieces, but there's a lot of people that live out there. The population density is, is quite thick. And, and I think, I don't know Lori, if you've been out there, but I know some of the other commissioners have.
I have.
And I just, I totally support this extended moratorium, and I wish it was more than six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back online. Seeing no one? Anyone else in the room? Are we getting down to the end? Yeah. Yes, it is, so I, I got caught, I wasn't sure what you're meaning, I gotcha. Yes, it is.
I just want to state that I am supportive of the moratorium and extending it.
Okay, thank you. So, anyone else online? I think it's quieting down, no one else in the room, kind of last chance, I think. Mr. Barta, oh, there's Deb back there. I thought Mr. Barta was going to speak, darn you. Yes, you should. I've heard you comment back there. I'm a mom, I can hear everything. Go ahead.
Debbie Wagner with CESE, and I'd like to thank the two gentlemen up here in the planning department for such good information for all of us. It was wonderful, we need more of that. I'm in support of the moratorium because of the safety of the people, which I've always stood for, safety of the people in our group. And I hope, again, that you do go by the findings of facts before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing and final comments from staff.
I'll start and then turn it over to Evan if he has anything to add.
I have a clarification question, if I may.
Okay. Sure.
And it's from staff, came out of Greg's testimony. We know when, if, if these are allowed or permitted or whatever, we know that they'll have sensors and whatnot and they'll have to pass all that in order to get their permit. But if this, if this goes to the planning commission for review, is there, and I guess this is a procedure question for staff. Is it, is it possible by law, can the planning commission put in some kind of a regulation that these companies have to have an outside analysis or a thorough goings over every so often, just to make sure things are still working functionally by an outside source? Or is that something that the planning commission couldn't make a condition of in the code?
I'm going to turn it over to Evan in case he's come across anything's research, but first I would think that we could put anything in there. It might be legally challenged, but if we want, we feel it's necessary and can justify it based on findings. For safety, we could require periodic inspections. We already require, for example, of solar and wind facilities, monthly reports demonstrating it's that they're meeting certain, well, certain requirements. So it'd be similar to that, I would think. Evan, do you have any?
Yes, definitely in the beginning, they would have to provide fire inspection and reports, analysis. Also, the decommissioning plan is going to contain lots of information in there. But that's at the beginning of the, of the application. Now, one issue that we have encountered in the research is that often utility companies or development companies who develop these facilities, solar and batteries, they hand it over, they turn it over to other companies. So that's, that's a big issue, basically because we develop relationships and with people who know what they went through, know all the recommendations and then the, the companies, the, the construction companies, for example, or management companies that they turn it over, they have no clue of what the developer went through to initial development. So that's a major issue that we have to address in the code in a way. We have somehow to monitor that and continue the relationship with the construction company, with the management company. So that they are aware of the conditions of the conditional use permit or whatever went through. Monitoring is a big aspect of it, of the project. And Greg brought some major issues, actually. We need to know what's going to happen in terms, let's say the company goes bankrupt. Something has to be in there. And money deposits and new payments and all that, all those are things to consider. And also the decommissioning plan, the fact that it was submitted now, let's say, doesn't mean that five years from now, it's going to stand true with all the requirements in there. So we have to consider that aspect in there also. And then something else that came up, I did mention lightning. There was a lightning that hit one solar installation and it shattered a few solar panels. And they scattered half a mile away, for example. So who's going to take care of that? So that's another thing to consider. That's part of the insurance also, that they, that the, that's probably part of the insurance that the applicant has to provide. But you know, these are things we're exploring right now and we're trying to lay down. They're going to be part of the of the solar ordinance. So.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I just Greg brought up that good question of I want to make sure we're not moving ahead of the fox running the hen house. So once we give them a permit, all we're doing then is saying, hey, does everything work? And they're like, yep, everything works fine. And we know nothing because we're not sending our people out there to inspect. So I don't know, just in my head, it would be nice if one of the conditions was they had to have an independent consultant. Do a analysis of their stuff every so often and give it a clean bill of health. And then report that data to us would be our way of quality control through time. So thank you, Greg, for, you didn't really bring that up, but you brought it up into my head. So at least that's another thing to look at anyway. That was the only clarification. I just wasn't sure if we could do that.
If I could, last things I'd like to say, because there's an interested group here and online. Just want to talk about the process and the reason where, and on the last hearing, we didn't have a recommendation because that was very much board driven. This one, we do have a recommendation. It's to continue the moratorium, but also to extend it an additional six months based on a work plan that was summarized briefly in your staff report. But it's around the grant funded solar project. We would include a battery energy storage system ordinance or a potentially ban, if that's the direction the, the group goes. And the process that we're looking at as far as work plan would be forming a project advisory committee, which will combine at large residents from the community. So folks in attendance online or in person could apply for those positions as well as very targeted individuals. Fire safety is brought up. We definitely want to have a fire chief or representative, emergency management represented. And we have a number of targeted groups that we'd want to make sure we included on the committee, including the industry folks themselves who could provide information. So those, the plan is to take it through a project advisory committee through June, up to six meetings. Those meetings will all include opportunities for public input, not just advisory committee, but the general public can participate in those meetings and provide comments at designated times during those meetings. After June, it would then go to the planning commission who'd hold their own public hearings and that'd be another opportunity for a comment. So there'll be a lot of opportunity for a public comment or direct participation through this process.
Do my commissioners have any comments?
No, I just appreciate what he just said. A lot of public input's a good thing.
Yeah. And Jake? Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. First question for staff is in what zones could a BSS system currently be permitted under your interpretation of code?
Some, I'm wondering where you are right now.
He's not up there at all.
My interpretation of the code is, because we did put consideration into this, the current energy overlay zone allows two uses outright. One is a solar facility, the other is a wind facility. It then allows, I don't remember the term, but basically ancillary uses or supporting uses. But it specifies what those are and those are operational buildings. It does not say anything about battery energy or storage systems. And when this was adopted in two thousand four or any updates have happened since, I did not, the SEPA, I don't think considered at all these type of systems. So my opinion is it's not covered by the overlay. So it'd have to be based on the underlying zoning. So they would be allowed only in zones where utility type uses would be allowed, which is most zones. I mean, utilities are allowed, but have to be through a conditional use. So they'd be looked at a lot more closely if they try to put in residential zone and maybe not even allowed because you don't have to allow a conditional use if it doesn't fit with the neighborhood. That's how we'd interpret it. It'd be a conditional use where other utilities are allowed in the zones. And if it's combined with a solar project, for example, the solar project would be allowed outright per the standards of the, well, until we do our new, new code, but the standards of the energy overlay zone or a wind project. The best aspect of it would have to be a separate conditional use as part of that project.
So we have the, the center part of the county is already not allowed for solar projects. According to our zoning.
Is, is that a question?
I don't think so.
Might have lost you.
Any best system use permits currently, correct?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear your whole question.
You cut out, Jake.
So, so any best system is going to have to go through a conditional use permit process. Of all of the statements that have been made by community members, do you feel that through the conditional use permit process, those concerns could be taken into account to adequately address or mitigate any of the impacts of a best system as it's currently designed?
I would say no. Only because there's such a human element to it and a knowledge element that if a conditional use came in, we would have to assemble all the information, get the right people in the room. Whereas if we're able to do a code like we're planning, we can get those people in the room and get standards set up ahead of time. I feel like it'd be a little bit hit and miss. I think we could, we could certainly get there, but it'd be case by case and possibly less consistent than if we were able to have a code that addresses the issues upfront.
So, but even with a code, you're still going to have case, case by case on every project. It's going to be a little bit different based on what type of material they're using, if it's Lipo or LIFO. All those things are, are you, you do that on each and every project, just like how we do in EIS on, you know, most large scale industrial projects, even though we have a programmatic EIS underneath it. That EIS is going to tell you what your standards and setbacks and everything else needs to be. And you go through that programmatically on each one. What I'm trying to understand is what do we have that currently in the system does not protect the public health, safety and welfare because we have a process that's been designed and built and has been operating for the last seventy years. I'm trying to understand what the, what findings of fact I can rely on to state that our current processes are inadequate to protect the community.
To me, it's, it's what I said that you have, if we go through a process, we can do most of the research. We're not going to get a hundred percent of the way there with standards. Every project will be a little different, but we might get ninety-five percent of the way there where we can standardize things where so often when a conditional use permit comes in as staff, we rely first on the applicant to provide information. They provide their information, they provide their studies, which could be in their own self-interest and often are. And then we rely on whatever expertise we are able to bring forward, which often isn't at a professional level when it comes to these type of facilities and they rely on the public to do research. I, so I guess my answer to that is our current process does cover it. I think putting standards in place in a thoughtful way through a process would strengthen, the code would make sure that we do cover all the bases, aren't relying so much on the applicant to start the conversation. We're starting the conversation.
But have we not changed the code that allows us to bring in the experts to come up with those decisions on a case by case basis? And we also get to charge the applicant for all those costs as well?
If that's the way the board wishes to go, that we certainly could. We currently have it written into our grant, so we would need to modify our grant to pull out the best aspect if, if you'd rather can just continue through conditional use. I don't think it hurt to provide criteria within the conditional use. Because we, we don't have, our conditional use is very weakly written. It doesn't have standards. Usually what I'm used to is conditional uses will have standards by use. So we'd have, actually have a best aspect of a conditional use. So here it's a conditional use. Here's what the best has to meet. Kind of like our energy overlay zone does with wind and to much lesser extent, solar. Our code doesn't have that. It's very, very weak, broad and general criteria for conditional use.
My, my next question is based that you, you wrote battery energy is pretty much any energy that gets stored. Would pumped hydro still be considered as a best?
To me, it isn't. I, my, I didn't do the internet research that Evan did, so you should probably answer this, but when you look, when I look it up, it, it defines it differently. It's the hydro storage versus battery energy storage system. Evan, do you have any clarification on that?
That is correct. Although again, there is many other ways that energy could be stored. So, but I don't think that was one of the storage, energy storage ways. I may be wrong, but based on what I've read so far.
And I think if we do the code, we should specify that it, it doesn't include.
And this, I think, yeah. And I think right now we're addressing batteries, specifically battery storage, energy.
I think you'd want to say the chemical storage of energy would probably be the right way to do it. But I, I would definitely in any moratorium or the expansion of the moratorium, I'd like that to be very clear. So that we're not putting on hydro, which the county is in support of in its economic development strategic plan. And now making it so that it's, it's not allowed. That would be quite the mixed signals. I'd just like that to be very clear. Can you talk a little bit about, if we do pass this, what this means with FSEC and can, can somebody just go around the county and go to FSEC?
For our current rules, I think they can always go around the county. Part of our goal in doing this is to try to get local decisions instead of going to FSEC. So the grant is a clean energy fund grant through the state. So it's, I mean, the purpose of it is to promote solar and wind, which isn't necessarily, and I was very honest in our application. I, I didn't say we're trying to promote it. I said, we're trying to do two things. One, and based on community values, one, make it difficult or impossible to put it where we don't think it, that meets our values, whatever those are, whether it's population density or prevailing winds or view sheds. And then to make it as simple as possible where we do think it's appropriate, as long as we have standards in place. So my ideal would be that the companies would want to come to us rather than FSEC, as long as they're putting it where we think it is appropriate and are willing and are able to meet the standards we have in place. It doesn't mean that they couldn't go around it. My understanding with FSEC, if they want to put it where we say that we're not going to allow it at all, or we're going to have incredibly strict standards. I think they can still go to FSEC, but my understanding is that FSEC at least has to address our code and say why they're not following it if, if we do have the standards in place.
Okay, good answer. My next question. You, thank you, Evan. I just wanted to say thank you for the very well done presentation. And we are looking at best systems being done in these containerized pods and units, whether they be twenty, thirty or forty foot containers. And can you, can you define how many megawatts or per container on average, whether it's FE or Lipo?
That is a good question. It is in the, in the literature. I did not write down the, the the amounts of energy, but it is, the, the numbers are there. And if you want, I can provide you the numbers and the restrictions that some counties have imposed on sites.
Okay, so where, where I'm going with this is part of our moratorium allows for onsite best systems up to ten megawatts. And the best I can find online is, is the ten megawatts of storages with live fee would potentially be three forty foot shaping containers full of batteries that would be not part of this. And so you could have that right next to somebody's house or next to their shop or their building. But yet we are in essence outlawing it anywhere else that could be, you know, five hundred yards from anything. To me, it seems like we're setting ourselves up using, I guess, numbers pulled out of the air that creates legal jeopardy for the county. Unless you have facts and figures to support the reason and rationale. And I remember part of the discussion was, well, what about the, we wanted to make it so the hospital could still build their hydrogen, you know, facility and everything else. Which nobody thought, well, that's still within city limits. The county doesn't have anything to do with it. I'm still trying to understand what this ten megawatt and, and are we setting ourselves up for potential litigation?
Yeah, that, that is a good point. The hospital was what we looked at and I believe their system is seven megawatts, but you're right, it's in it's in city limits, so it wouldn't apply.
Even a single battery container can catch fire. And one of the examples was actually, actually the, the surprise fire in Arizona, that was a single container out there that caught fire. So I guess it's a, it, that's a great point to expand, make sure we include even single battery containers within this moratorium until we explore and apply the ordinance.
Because I, I guess the, the issue is, is whether it's, whether it's ten megawatts or a hundred megawatts, these are all containerized. And so usually you're not going to have all of them go off at once because the design of them through the fire code is so that they can't spread beyond a certain amount if you do have a short. So we need to, we need to take that into consideration with how you're writing this moratorium as well. Especially if we're going to allow up to ten megawatts inside there.
I think the reason the ten megawatts. I think the reason the ten megawatts wasn't just the hospital, it was for in case the P U D wanted to put something behind their building and. And whatnot as well. So I I. I think we're diverting, but um.
And and I think that's accurate. It's been so long since we had the first discussion, but. I think we're using that as a model of what could be used, and that's why the condition says um. It shall not apply to best associated with inside spread backup energy storage be used by specific building or site. Up to ten megawatts. So it's not just battery storage out in the middle of nowhere, but it's specifically for a project that's utilizing it.
Right, and I would, I would, you know, I I see where Mister Anderson is coming from is why do we need to do this if uh it right now, it can go through a C U P and. We would do it site specific and you know what? He's a hundred percent correct. But. That doesn't give the people sitting on the C U B board all the information and data that you're going to get out of this process. It also. FSEC can just, you're, somebody can run right to FSEC and our C U P doesn't matter anymore. This is irrelevant to FSEC. So then you have absolutely no code, which is what we had with solar. Um, and so arguing our C U P board is our board of adjustments is good enough. Uh, is is a very inferior argument. Um, when we've just proven that FSEC can do whatever they want without caring what our C U P board has anything to do with. So. Uh, I think that in of itself, argument backfires and means that we need to do more. Uh, to protect ourselves. Uh, one question I do have of staff, when he said there's no batteries permitted in the county. I I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that Lund Hill. Applied for battery storage and got it, even though they don't have any battery storage out there.
That's accurate, and they've they've verbally stated to me that they don't intend to build their battery storage, but.
Right, but we did give them the permit uh for theirs, because it was never looked at. You know, eight years ago when that was going on. So, yeah, no, I thought you said that we haven't issued any permits for battery storage. So I wanted to clarify whether I was right or wrong that we have actually issued permits in the past.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Um, I have no further questions and um I am. Uh, would you need, if we were going to make a motion on this, would you need essentially. A motion to extend the moratorium for twelve months uh following um. In accordance with the work plan, uh, or would you need anything else in a motion for that?
We would need that and we would need um fi- findings. I feel like Evan's staff report is thorough enough that you could base your findings on the risks he identified in the staff report. Um, and then, as he mentioned his his uh presentation, you could, of course, amend or add to those.
So if we, if we mentioned what I said and then mentioned his presentation and direct staff to return to us. Uh, with findings of fact for signature, that would be adequate?
I believe so, and we could base the findings of fact on the staff report since you'd be referencing that.
Good. Okay, that's all I have, Madam Chair. If you're ready for a motion or if you have questions.
Um, we also need a motion on the first one, too.
Yep.
Okay, quick, quick question. Was there any discussion about wanting to keep the record open, though, for this meeting as well, or was that only for the first one? For the written record or additional time?
I believe, I believe u- usually what we would do is we would keep the record open till at least Friday, close of business. While directing staff to uh draft findings of fact for the board's consideration next week.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Christopher, do you have anything more to say about that?
Other than the fact that I wish this board would remain consistent when it does that, is it didn't do that in the Snowden Land use hearing?
And I'm, I'm willing to entertain your motion. I guess that's. Where I can go with this.
Uh, then I would entertain a motion that we uh pass the moratorium, we extend the moratorium for uh for one year. Um, in accordance with the work plan. Uh, noting that uh we'll be using the presentation provided and directing staff to come back with a findings of fact. Um, leaving. Uh, the hearing open for written testimony until close of day Fri- this Friday. Uh, but closing the record to oral testimony.
Mister Anderson, anything? If not, I will step down in second. Any discussion?
I would just mention that if we're going to leave the record open to. Written comment until Friday at five, then the motion should not have included a motion to pass. Uh, the extension. If you're going to do that, the record should not be left open.
Well, then I will uh add a friendly amendment to not keep the written or the mo- or the uh. It open to more written testimony, as I believe the majority of the board already has a conclusion, is strong on their conclusion. And um, I think we have enough evidence presented to us right now to close the the public hearing for all written and verbal.
Do I need to resecond that? I I can agree with.
If you want to second the a friendly amendment, yes.
Okay, so I will step down and second the friendly amendment. And just to clarify, it's for resolution zero nine one two four in regards to. The moratorium on interim zoning regarding battery energy storage systems, the best, because.
Yes, thank you. I did not.
Okay, that's okay. So we have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion further?
I would just mention that uh, based on the information presented, uh, it seems like we do have processes in place. That already protect the health, safety and welfare of the public and that we've had those processes in place for quite some time. And that uh I, at that time, I cannot find that there is an emergency that it necessitates a moratorium. With that said, I am one hundred percent in favor of directing the planning commission using this grant to. Come up with both solar ordinances and the battery energy storage system um. Uh, ordinance or however you're going to define it. I am in favor of that, but what I cannot find is that there's an emergency because there are processes currently in place. But I will respect the will of the board as always.
I will use my time to speak during this time. Uh, to say that I do believe there is an emergency because the seated commissioner for the last four years in district three has not been able to make an appointment. Uh, to the Board of Adjustments and the two representatives from District Three, his district, uh, are not his appointments. Uh, so I do not believe that that board has a fair representation. Uh, of the general public, and for that reason, I do declare that there is an emergency. So that ends my comment.
And I'll make comment uh so we can finish this. I do believe there's an emergency because I do. Agree with staff that our C U P process is weak. Um, and I think this leaves the door open for things that uh. Would not be healthy or safety for any of our communities, and I'd like to see this go to planning commission. Uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes.
And Scott, just to clarify on the the other battery storage. Uh, if we could just come up with a list of what what, if if I wanted to do that right now on my property as a recycler. What would I have to do through planning or what would I have to do through building? And then what are the consequences if I don't comply through code compliance?
Okay, we'll definitely put that together. And I thi- I think what we'll you'll find is that we do have it covered as well as we're going to be able to. Uh, also do a little research into the the risks. I don't know how I'll come up with. Number of cell phones we could store and that type of thing, but we may not need to.
Right, right, I'm not, I'm, yeah, let's.
If we can satisfy that we already have it covered, that that's.
I do believe that this is something that could cause a problem like the storage of tires has for the county. But I don't know that there's a way to fix it, so I I'm kind of there with you. So if you can just kind of give me that information, it might help me. Uh, move on.
Um, and to clarify with staff, you were looking for a moratorium on the first one, but I don't think we need that yet. We've continued that to the twelfth. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, I'm just clarifying what I need to see by the twelfth, so I can get in, and I would assume we're just going to have some board discussions. Um, on where we want to go from there on the twelfth.
Okay, so we need a motion for continuance on that is what she's looking for.
Got it. I will uh make a motion uh for a continuance of the public hearing. Um, until what did we decide November twelfth?
Yes.
Uh, for the public hearing on mass battery storage, lithium ion battery storage. Um. And allow the board time for future deliberations.
And zoning controls.
Um, yep.
Yep. Uh, motion.
I will second that, but I just wanted to make sure that you said lithium ion, and this was actually for all batteries, not just lithium ion.
I don't have the paperwork in front of me. It was for the first uh moratorium.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
My spreadsheet.
Bulk storage of batteries.
The bulk storage of batteries, there you go.
And interim zoning controls. So motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. It was kind of messy, but we got it. Yes, great, thank you.
So for the general public, that was all confusing. The first healing, her hearing is held over till the twelfth for future discussion. The second hearing, the moratorium passed. Extension passed, and it's going to the planning commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Christopher, Mister Anderson. Um.
Well, she got some more halls for me. I ran out.
That concludes uh. Public hearing for today. Thank you very much, everybody, for participating. Yeah, you did a great job, Evan. Thank you.
Yeah, very good presentation, Evan, and I want to thank the public for showing up and giving input. Stay involved.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so for us. Uh, we're moving to new businesses. Is there any new business? I'm not seeing none unfinished business or miscellaneous reports and comments. Anything from you guys?
I would just mention that uh I know, I just got an email that a wolf has been killed in Clickattack County. And that the Fish and Wildlife has put a ten thousand dollar bounty out for whoever did it. Um, so just letting you guys know that uh the wolf wars are here.
Is that a second one?
Uh, no, first, first wolf killed. It's the wolf, the wolf, it, the wolf got killed, not the wolf killed something.
Yeah.
No, I I read the report today in a news article from King County, I think, that said. East of the Clickattack River around one forty two is kind of what it said, but that's all it said.
Yep, okay, thank you very much.
Did anybody get a hint on whether that was a collared wolf? I I it didn't say so in the article I read.
As I understand, it was. Mister Smith is saying no. I'd heard yes, so we're now we're down to gossip.
Okay.
Well, at least that's something, because I didn't hear anything about a call.
Yeah.
Yeah, the article I read didn't say collared or non-collared, so I I don't know.
Yeah, they probably don't want to give out much information about it. I don't know, but everything I heard is secondhand, thirdhand, so. Kind of Facebook. Um. Okay, anything else? Unfinished business, new business, reports or comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No.
That sounds good, and we have no executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Say it.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Bye bye, see you guys.